Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting, the committee, the whole meeting for May 6th. Ms. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Peligunoglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Eight members present.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to the minutes of the April 15th meeting. Vice President Hussein?
I would move the meeting ministers present.
Okay. We got a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down to public comment on agenda items. It doesn't look like we had anybody sign up for virtual comments, so we'll take the people in the audience. Anybody has any public comment, please come down to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have up to three minutes. All right. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on. Okay, we have quite a few presentations, so we'll start off with the police. We have Chief Soesby and Chief Baggis. Not sure who's all coming up to present, I apologize. So Chief, please make sure your light's on. We will open it up to you and then do your presentation and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I will read the Budget Department presentation questions as directed and give you my response, and then Cheryl is here to answer any in-depth questions if you have any. Number one, what is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Current FY24 budget was $54,586,595. The proposed FY25 budget is $57,117,927, a difference of $4,464,507, resulting from a significant increase in fleet rental, parking subsidies, and fringes that came to us that is not really within my control. Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? The answer, no. Number three, are there any rate or fee increases? If so, why? Answer, no. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? Answer, no. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. Answer, no. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with your budget? Yes. All efforts will continue to be made to perform proficiency and effectively and safely for the City of Lansing. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? Yes. Our LCAT, which is our Lansing Crisis Assessment Team, is one that will be, is a new project for the budget. Next question, who are the top two largest vendors in your department and when were they last bid? This one, we share some of the department, the vendors with other departments within the city. The Lansing Police Department's biggest vendor is Axon, which is our camera system, our fleet cameras, our body worn cameras, and soon to be our, our tasers, and soon to be our records management. That last bid was two years ago, and that is two years into an eight-year contract with Axon. We also share Dewpoint and Burger Chevrolet with other departments within the city, and those are the two next largest, but we just have a share of those. Those aren't all ours. And what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what are the savings? Part, one of them is our records management, our records retention and digitization project. The efforts to digitize our records have begun, and essentially, we pay to have, per law, we have to retain our records for a certain amount of time, and we pay to have those in cold storage. The effort is to move those into the digitization process so that we do not have to pay that ongoing fee, and that is in process now. The long-term savings are projected, but they're not accurate, but they will be pretty substantial once that project is complete. And then our LCAT and social worker involvement, you know, this is an operational change, our historic policing that we've talked about, that I've talked about many times before. This provides proper services and resources to the city and Lansing residents to avoid repeat calls for service for police officers, which are not always the right resource for those in crisis. And that is all the questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any additional questions, comments? Mr. Delai, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Mr. Jackson, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Chief. Can you just describe in a little more detail, what was it, the I-CAT, what'd you call it?
LCAT.
LCAT. Can you just, I know that you said for times where traditional law enforcement might not be necessary, I can probably think of a few scenarios, but can you just kind of share with the public some of those scenarios?
Sure. The Lansing Crisis Assessment Team is a team comprised of a police officer and a social worker. The initial plan involved a paramedic from the police department. This team goes out and is very proactive, proactive and reactive in the sense that when somebody, there's a call that involves any type of mental crisis, they are there, so they have three resources all in one unit. The social worker for that resource, the police officer if it's criminal, and the paramedic for any medical situation. That, that program has, is kind of a developing program that we have, and it will be something that we look forward to, to bolster up and move forward.
And it's mobile.
Oh, yeah, and it's a mobile. It's dispatched out just like anything we do, like the police officers do. They're not in a uniform, per se, they have soft clothes, and we have three units currently out there, and we have, I have just some rough stats for the, for the last cycle, which is the last month. We were out, we had 29 total calls for service. We serviced 34 citizens, citizen contacts, and those are 34 individuals in some form of crisis that needed assistance and resources and not necessarily a police resource, but maybe the social worker resource.
All right, thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Mr. Delai?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I thought of something. Chief, getting up to speed, back after a while. In Mayor's presentation, when he talked about the 15 police officers, crime check, crime analysis, and the camera tech, he talked about a proposed public safety revenue sharing, and at that time, he said, if it is approved. Is it in?
No, not to my knowledge.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Cost?
Thank you, President Garza. Chief, thanks for being here. CPOs, is there room in this budget, or do we foresee expanding that to maybe other neighborhoods as we get hires in?
Yes, that's, the long-term answer is yes. The short-term answer is we are trying very hard to fill our positions. Once those are filled, that is one of the top priorities, to get our CPOs back fully staffed in those neighborhoods and develop additional ones throughout the city, yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so do we have any further questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here this evening, much appreciated. I know we spoke, or I guess in text form, last week regarding the 15 officers. Now, was that 15 officers coming out of the academy, or are you talking about the safety grant?
So, no, we have, we currently have, so today, I just swore in six new police officers. We are, we had, the last academy, we, we had 15 officers come out of the academy. Those officers are still in training, so we'll start seeing those trickle out and counting our numbers probably by the end of this month. So we'll start to see the benefit of having those, and then these six that we just had sworn in today will go through the FTO process.
Okay. One second, Councilman Brown. So along with that, just for, for the audience, how many police officers do we have budgeted, and how many do we currently have?
We are funded for 212 sworn officers, and we currently have 193.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Garza, and thank you for being here, Chief, and all that you do. I was at a community meeting over the last month or so, and the question had arisen as well. When we're getting new officers, are we also promoting current officers to other administrative roles where, for example, if you have 15 officers, will there be 15 eventually in the community in the streets, or are five other officers promoted and we really have two new officers, you know, in the community?
So we currently have a few open promotions, and those are detective spots right now. So once we are staffed up, we will eventually fill those positions and fill those promotions, but right now, there's, there's two open promotions, and those are detective spots, and they will remain open until I'm comfortable with the staffing on the road. Okay, thank you so much, Chief, thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional questions or comments? Councilman Jackson?
Just one, and it has to do with the number of funded and the number of actual. So as long as I've been here, there's been a fairly significant gap between the amount of funded and the amount of actual officers. Do you know, like, I guess, has it ever been under 10 or under 6 in the last, like, when was it the last time it was close to, you know?
Well, in the, in the past few years, with everything that's happened, I would say it's been fairly close within the last four years, five years, within, within that 10 number. We unfortunately went through a period of, of large retirement groups, and based on, including that, on top of COVID and, and everything else going on in the world, we had a, we had a bit of a difficult time hiring new officers, but, but that pendulum has swung, and we are on the uptick. You know, we had 50-plus applicants in this last process, which is, which is, which is a great number for us, so we're very, very hopeful that we will be up and close to that 212s very soon. Now, 212 means hired, but not necessarily counting the numbers, I want to make that clear. For example, those 15 that we talked about earlier, they're hired, they're, they're here, and they are being paid, but they don't count on the road as solo officers until they complete their training.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions or comments for the chief? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here this evening, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down on our list of presentations, we have Downtown Lansing, Inc., and I seen Kathleen Endure Lee out there. Good evening, Kathleen. Thanks for being here.
Yes, good evening.
Make sure your green lights on, I think you just did.
Yep.
Okay, we'll open the floors up to you for your presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, excellent. I'll run down through the list of questions. Number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Our annual budget for fiscal year 2025 is reduced by over $2 million, as we not only fully expended our ARPA and CDBG funds, but also continued to expend the state funds that were awarded to DLI to help us with the long-term recovery of the loss of state office workers. These funds have to be fully expended by 2026. Also, there was the assessment adjustment that was made just recently in this past fiscal year, so you'll see that reflected in the revenue line as well. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? No. Question number three, are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? Overall, no, other than that assessment increase that was made this current fiscal year. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions within our department? No. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes, thanks to the additional funds and support provided by the state as well as private funders. Question number seven, are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing within this budget? State funding support does allow for innovation with the programs, our services, initiatives to support the downtown environment, so we are introducing this upcoming fiscal year a new tenant improvement program to cultivate more of an environment that supports addressing the vacancies that we see in our downtown, especially on the first floor retail spaces, and rehabbing the historic vacant buildings to make them more usable by future retail tenants. We also, I should, we received funding from MEDC via LEAP to provide small service support trainings through their Small Business Support Hubs program. Question number eight, who are the top two largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? Lake State Landscaping and Snow Removal, uh, Removals, excuse me, is our annual maintenance contractor for the downtown district. We bid that service every three to five years and are currently in the midst of bidding that service. We issued that RFP in April. And then Smith Group is the second highest contractor. That contract was awarded in 2022 for our comprehensive market analysis, and we still have some outstanding items as a result of that. Last question, what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what are the savings? We've implemented a new project management system to really overall increase efficiencies, manage our workflow, including managing our volunteer-led projects, the business recruitment and retention work that we're doing, as well as grant management. We just implemented this over the last two months, and we'll evaluate the efficiencies and any cost savings over this year.
Well, thank you for being here. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Cost?
Thank you, President Garza. Kathleen, I see that we're doubling how much we're spending this year on beautification. Could you maybe tell us what we're, you know, what, what some of the things are that we're beautifying when it comes to downtown? I see the flower baskets.
Are you talking about the income line for designed public spaces?
Yeah, design beautification.
Yep, so that's actually an increase in the income that we're bringing in and the sponsorships that we do for a variety of our beautification efforts within the downtown, and that includes beautification and cleanliness, et cetera, of our public spaces.
Look at me misreading that.
Okay.
So then, could you briefly describe, are there any new beautifications that are going to happen this year? I know that we've discussed doing some of the things that other cities do with the river and bridges, lighting, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and we definitely anticipate with the upcoming planned CSO Street Reconstruction Project along South Washington Square, adding some additional outdoor seating, tying in lighting enhancements, if that's a possibility, and working with the city on all of those improvements.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions from council, comments? Seeing none. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, moving on down to assessing, I hope I get the name right. We have Jennifer Seisberger, is that right? My office manager kind of helped me with that, so I was hopeful I got it right. Thanks for being here this evening. All right. Okay, well, much appreciated for being here tonight. Make sure your green light is on in your microphone, and the floor is yours. Once you're done with your presentation, we will open it up for questions.
So, first question was, is your budget from last year to this?
Is the microphone on?
It was. There it is, okay. Yeah, probably wasn't. Got it, yeah. And also, just a brief introduction, I know there's a couple of council people I haven't met yet, but I'm Sharon Frishman, I'm the outgoing assessor, and this is the incoming assessor. The difference between budgets, it's really just basically inflation. We're just people and supplies, that's about it. Any changes in the services? No. Rate increases, that doesn't really apply to us. Major equipment purchases, that doesn't really apply to us either. Eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? We do have a few contract employees, but they're only there temporarily to sort of fill in the gaps while we struggle to hire full-time people. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities? Yes. New initiatives, not really. Two largest vendors for us would be KCI, who provides, you know, our mailing services. We mail 45,000 assessment notices every year, so the other vendor would be, it's called Crexxy. It replaces CoStar, which is a commercial data supplier. We switched to Crexxy. It's a monthly bill, about half the cost of, of CoStar. Operational changes, to become more efficient, well, we've just done it out of necessity since we've been understaffed, so we've looked at, we're always looking at ways to be more efficient, and I know Jennifer is going to continue that.
As best I can.
Yep.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mr. Spatafor, Councilman Spatafor?
Thanks for being here one last time. Quick question, I see the budgets kind of fluctuate between 23 and 25. What's, it seems there's a number of reductions throughout FY25 compared to FY24. What's that stemming from? Is there a reduction in staff? Are you closing vacant positions?
We haven't officially eliminated any positions, but we have been so understaffed, we've not even come close to spending our personnel budget.
Okay, so the personnel budget was written down, knowing those will be filled then?
Hopefully.
Okay.
I think there, I think there might have been one of the three administrative assistant positions that...
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we officially cut it out, or...
Oh, I might have done that.
Okay.
In the absence of uncertainty.
Yeah, we've been getting by with just two admins for, gosh, several years now. We have sort of combined some tasks for, for those people, and it seems to be going all right, so, so, yeah, we probably won't be filling that third admin position.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any additional questions or comments from council at this time? Okay, seeing none. I do have a question, though. I see under our notes that it says that assessing is opted out of 3-1-1 service. Could you explain a little bit about that?
Sure. We have, you know, we've always been there, we were probably one of the first departments to come back after COVID, answer the phones, respond to people that, of course, not as many people that come in as there used to be pre-COVID, but there's a couple of issues, and one of them being PA 660, which was passed a few years ago, that requires anyone that answers any type of assessing questions to be, receive training or be certified. So that, I, we didn't really want that exposure of 3-1-1 answering questions, even though they do have scripts, and they would write up tickets if the question got too technical or complicated, but with assessing, so many of the questions are technical or complicated that we felt that it wasn't as efficient. If they're writing up a ticket, and then by the time we get it, and then we have to call the person back, it just seemed to be more work and less taxpayer-friendly, really, because we do answer the phone all day, every day. So, so those were the couple of concerns, and I think it's been going well.
Yeah, I think we're doing fine.
Great, all right, well, I appreciate you, you expanded on that. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Councilman Jackson?
Just to follow up on that last topic, so you mentioned you answer the phones all day, every day. I'm curious, are any of those calls not necessarily for assessing, or where you, you know, don't have to do a ticket that maybe 3-1-1 could have redirected?
Yeah, we've always received phone calls from other departments. I think every department does. We do get a lot of treasury phone calls. I don't think that, I mean, we don't necessarily write up a ticket, we might forward an email, forward a phone call down to treasury, but I don't, I don't know if it's been a significant problem.
I don't think it's been.
Yeah, and we're, we're very grateful for 3-1-1 to take those treasury calls, for sure. But, you know, and interestingly enough, we probably, and I think this is a post-COVID thing, we probably get more emails than we get phone calls to our general assessor email box.
Okay, seeing no additional questions, much appreciated, thanks for being here tonight. Okay, moving on down our list, we have LEPFA, Tristan Wright. Are you here in the audience? Yes, I see you, okay. Well, good evening, everyone.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, thank you.
Good evening, President Garza and City Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and who I have with me over here, I have my board chair, Kenrick Hall, and my VP of Finance, Kirby Deutsch, just in case he might have something that he can spound a pound that I can't, all right? So I'll be presenting on LEPFA's budget for fiscal year 2425. Starting with the first question, what is the difference with our budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? From the current fiscal year, the Lansing Center's operating contribution was reduced by 38%, which is $497,555. Grossback's city contribution was reduced by 19%, which is $18,383. Jackson Field was reduced by 6%, which is $38,381, giving a total contribution or reduction of 28%, which is $554,319. We have increased our building revenue, our building rental and food and beverage revenues to combat this reduction. Next question, are there any changes in the services that our department is responsible for, and if so, why? We have no changes in that service across our three properties. Question number three, are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? So we did increase our rates over at the Grossback Golf Course. The increased rates will range anywhere from 4.5% to 11.5%, and that's depending on the category of green fees or power carts rentals, so the golf carts, and that's a combination between nine holes or 18 holes, and then either weekend rates or weekday rates, and that's either for your juniors or senior rates, and for the, both golf and the golf cart rental. Also, our fleet, we have actually updated our fleet. The fleet was 2013 carts, and we have updated them to a 2020 cart, so these are very comparable to the increases at other courses in this area. And then our, our increases are comparable to similar courses in this area, as I just stated, forgive me. And then also food and beverage items at the Lansing Center, that will increase because of just the cost to goods and services. Question number four, are there major equipment purchases proposed in our budget? No, there is no major equipment purchases within our proposed budget. Our major projects that are going on, they do fall outside of our operating budget. Currently, there at the Lansing Center, we awarded the $5 million, so a lot of those items are being covered by the grant that we did receive. And then Grossback, we do have a budget positive variance, and so we are anticipating and reinventing, or reinvesting, not reinventing, but reinvesting into a potential new mower, and cart storage, irrigation, and some hole renovation. And then with Jackson Field, we have some work going on over there, MLB requirements that the team does receive a new turf field come this fall, along with some new safety nets being extended, and then we have some HVAC units that are 28-plus years old, and the equipment is failing, and it's a little challenging to find some parts. Question number five, are there any eliminating or combining or contracting of positions in our budget? We are not eliminating any positions or combining or contracting any new positions that are proposed in our budget, but we do currently have our turf consultant for Jackson Field, Angrill Speck, and then we also have a temp service that helps with events due to our challenge of staffing for on-call staff, and then also, we have a contracted fractual-like IT service that helps with our IT, our IT network there at the Lansing Center, and then contracted accounting assistance as well, which was a shortfall here in staffing. Question number six, are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with our budget? Yes, we are. Question number seven, are there any initiatives or services that our department will be providing with the budget? LEPFA frequently reviews all of our options on pricing for our venues and facilities, and including, but not limited to, naming rights, rental structures, and pricing for services. and including but not limited to naming rights, rental structures and pricing for services and products. Question number eight, who are our top largest vendors for our department and when was the last time that they were bidded? Gordon Foods is one of our top vendors. That's not necessarily a bidded component. They're pretty much kind of the only shop in town that the Lansing Center does receive a lot of their foods from. And then Chase Creative is an AV company that is inside the building that does provide a service. They are our preferred customer vendor. But if there is a different event that wants to bring in, you know, a different audiovisual company, they are more than welcome to do so. And then question number nine, what, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in our department? And where were our savings? Just a few things, we have changed our credit card processing fee for cost savings and this was our first year. And we are estimating approximate about a $5,000 a month savings. And we are accepting e-checks, which will be a cost savings depending on the usage. For example, fee reduction can range from anywhere from 3% to 0.75% of the transaction from a credit card to an e-card. And then we are turning our accounts into an interest-bearing account. And this is the first time that we've done this to increase some revenue. And then also the lighting project, lighting project that took place over at Jackson Stadium. We are showing some good results, the decrease of usage, approximately about 30%. So we're looking at about $40,000 a year and that is it.
Okay, thank you for being here. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Our internal auditor, Mr. Glynn.
Hey, Tristan.
Hi, how are you, sir?
Looking at the information in the packet, I'm a little confused and maybe this is an accounting question, but you've got things at the bottom called reimbursements and business savings. And frankly, if I have, if I buy something for $100, but they give me a discount and I only pay 80, don't I just expense it as 80? It looks like you're expensing it as 100, but then down here you're saying, hey, savings. Can you explain that or...
Can you?
That might be more of a me area of the budget. You're talking about on, I believe it's page...
So you pages, well, 90 through 92.
90 through 92. Forget my slowness at the moment. I think 90 to 92 is assessing, so jumping forward to DLI towards the affiliated agencies, we're towards the backend. But overall, this came from discussions of working with LEPFA towards the end of our budget process. We took a look at a historical perspective of budgeted versus actual expenditures of the affiliated agency. One thing that I have to commend LEPFA on is that coming out of COVID, they've done a tremendous job in restoring their operating margins year to year. And so when looking at the annual subsidy that is required to maintain their operations, it comes out that although they wanted to give themselves room, particularly with the change in management, to adopt their budget at a reasonable threshold, we at the city did not want to specify specifically where any of those savings would come from, particularly as they're undergoing a fairly comprehensive review of how they do business, looking for new efficiencies and the best way to operate their practices. So I want to again thank LEPFA for their good work.
Nobody else did something like that, so...
Oh, I mean, in some senses, the city itself does that in our general fund with our vacancy factor, where we budget for all of our positions and then there's the level of attrition that we estimate. There will be 1.5 million over the course of the fiscal year. And then by year end, we reallocate that to the appropriate accounts, which council will see in a matter of weeks and the final results of it. It's a philosophy, it may not be an ideal philosophy. And I believe since I adopted this, LEPFA has come up with an allocation internally of how you've assigned that within your budget. And so we could potentially swap those pages out for more precise accounting, if you prefer. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you, Tristan, for being here. You did a wonderful job explaining everything. Thank you so much. My question was, I know that kind of we're going back and forth here, but my question was, what are, what do you feel are the barriers causing the need for the city subsidy? And is there a strategy that's being deployed to change that outcome or the need for that?
Did you say what are the barriers for the need for the city operating funding? Is that what your question was? Is there any way I can get back with you on that question?
Sure, no problem. But just in general, you know, what do you feel are the barriers that we're facing at creating a revenue positive, you know, Lansing Center, so on and so forth?
All three properties?
Yeah.
There could be various, I mean, the way people do business, you know, especially after COVID. It took us kind of a, a slow climb to really climb out of that because a lot of people are not necessarily gathering, a lot of people are not spending. A lot of the numbers of people attending seminars or conventions and whatever the case may be that they might utilize. The Lansing Center most certainly did reduce. Not only that, we know that cost is increasing, right? Cost of goods and services are increasing. And then I'm not going to say unfortunately, but just even the dynamics of a convention center does tend to rely on some form of operating fund, whether it's through a hotel tax, right, or a cap tax, or maybe there's a sole sponsor or naming rights, right? But there are some convention centers mainly throughout this country that do rely on a form of funding mechanism.
Is there a team, I know you're, you know, just getting into this role more. Is there a, going to be a team or is there a team internally or thinking about hiring an external team for coming up with new, maybe value propositions or opportunity to create revenue in this new market? Because of course, we do understand COVID happened, but you know, is there any look to pivot or, you know, transform as we go forward?
There is, you know, we do work closely with Choose Lansing CVB, that they most certainly do help us book the Lansing Center, right? So we do have this partnership that they most certainly help us book our, our space. And then even our own team inside does the same thing, but yes, to answer your question in the, in the short of it.
Thank you. And lastly, I know you talked about the grant, receiving the grant. At a high level, what is the grant being used for, just for the general public?
So some various things, mainly are improving our life safety system, which is our fire alarm system. It's 30-plus years old, it's archaic. It does not speak to 911 directly. So you kind of have a pause, but the, our fire safety system is one of them. Our IT infrastructure was another. We do have some elevator repair work that we need to take care of as well. And then, oh gosh, Councilman Brown. We have some structure components that we are trying to repair as well, a roof repair. So those are some of the various items that we have been utilizing that funding for.
Thank you so much. So we, we don't expect to see a whole new facelift on the...
No, sir, you will not see a whole new facelift, no.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilman Cost, then Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, President Garza. So as I'm looking through the budget here, one thing that isn't here that was here last year was the ending, the net position for each fund for Lansing Center, Jackson Field and the Golf Course. Do we know what those numbers are?
I do. So the ending net position for the Lansing Center was $3,506,364. Jackson Field was $484,665. And Grossback was $1,205,845.
So I guess I'm trying to understand the subsidy on, I guess, any of these properties when you have that kind of money in the bank for these. Especially like the Golf Course, for example, $78,000. You've got 1.2 million in the bank. Is there a big project?
So yes, Councilman Cost, we are looking to rent, actually reinvest back into the Golf Course. The irrigation system is one of the big components. Unfortunately, we do not make a hydraulic system anymore in the cold climate. And then also redoing the master plan for the Golf Course itself. And then also even the clubhouse, you know, the property is, it is dated and it's run its course. So there are a few items that we are looking to most certainly update there at Grossback. And the irrigation being one of them, because that's very important.
So the Lansing Center is 800,000 and you've got 3.5 million in the bank. Does that include, is that money from the 5 million that you received?
So that is the total liability and net position. Our total net position is 1,973,000. So we do not have 3.5 million in the bank. It is the 1,903,000. And that is largely due to the 600,000 in COVID relief money that we did receive.
So what were to happen to the Golf Course if this city subsidy was cut?
We wouldn't do any major repairs over there.
Even with that, that amount of money in the bank?
The 1 million that you're referring to?
Yeah, 1.2 million.
Pretty much, once we would take care of the irrigation system and then maybe the clubhouse, that, that would be probably pretty much it and the master plan of reworking that Golf Course.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to ask a few questions specifically on the Lansing Center. The budget, page 90 of, I guess it's 165. So I guess I feel like the numbers are inflated for the revenues and deflated for the expenditures. And pretty much because when you look at last year's actuals and even 2003 and 2024, for all of the revenues, for the most part, it's so much lower than what the proposed 2025 is, for the most part, on almost all of them. And then I think, okay, so we're going to be doing a lot more business there. Like you said, things are picking up from COVID probably. But then I look at the expenditures and then you would expect like things to maybe be higher because of more business. Like, first of all, I wonder is security a typo? Where it says proposed 228,000, when last year it was 26,000? And the year before that was 19,000?
Yes, so part of that is largely due to how it's being reported. Initially, that was in events. We pulled that out to show that that is our in-house security that we pay for. That has not been pushed onto an event. That is our 24-hour security that we implement for the building.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess why would marketing be basically half when you're expecting more business?
So initially, silver bells in the city was in our Lansing Center operating budget. Now that is pulled out into its own special events budget.
Okay, and how about personnel services or and/or food and beverage, the first two lines? If we're doing more business, why would the expenditures be relatively the same or less?
So the expenses, that also includes some staffing. So we do have, we had lower staffing and now we're using temp services to bridge that gap. We also anticipated from last, our current budget, that we would have higher inflation on food costs and we really didn't see those come in. So that is largely why we kept that the same, as well as we're not doing as many big projects. With the budget cut for the Lansing Center, we don't have that in here now to do some of the added food and beverage projects.
Okay, I appreciate that and those are all good answers. I mean, I feel a little bit better. It's just that I, I just don't want it to seem like, and if, you know, we're, if we're supposed to do 800,000, but really you all know just on how you did your estimates about what you really expected, what you're hopeful for, then it's going to be a lot more than that. And then it's just like everybody besides us, I guess. So if that's the case, then maybe just try to be, I'm sure it's the best that you guys all have, so hopefully it's accurate.
Yes, and during budgeting, we are hoping to project what the future looks like in our building and a lot of that we do not know. So we're hoping to get 1 million in rental, but we will not know that really until a couple of months. There's a lot of in-year bookings now that didn't happen in the past. I want to say we had, we know about 75% prior to 6/30, but this budget is created in December. So we're really just projecting and hoping that we are going to get that 1 million mark and as well as the 3.5 million in food and beverage. But we don't have that necessarily on the books until it's on the books.
Thank you, we're rooting for you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional questions, comments from council? Councilman Cost.
Yeah, quickly, what I failed to ask, so I went back 15 years on budgets and I looked at how much in subsidy that LEPFA has been getting every year. And it was my understanding when LEPFA was created, the goal was to, to level out the subsidy the city was given to even out, balance the sheet. We're not there. The subsidy didn't grow this year, but in general, it's grown every year. So I guess what I'm asking is, is there a long-term strategy to get off of the government subsidy?
There is a long-term plan, hope, goal, that we would reduce our operating subsidy, Councilman Cost. You know, I believe my predecessor has actually talked about the various bills through our legislative here, you know, actually just Grand Rapids just passed a bill, I believe it might have been House Bill 5448, that allowed them a hotel, motel type of tax that was earmarked towards convention centers and facilities, right? So we are hoping for the same for the Lansing Center, right? That would be one avenue that we can most certainly tap into. This is going to be a long process, I believe, but we are working towards that goal.
So is there anything else besides the hotel tax? Because we, I have discussed this and I've heard this for years about the hotel tax. Is, is that the only strategy to reduce those subsidies?
Well, increase our rental, obviously, you know, you know, having more business at the Lansing Center, most definitely. That's one way that we are always looking at. And like I said, basically looking at other ways, you know, naming rights to the facility there. That is one avenue. That's not a guarantee, but that's a potential, right? And just generating various events that we may have not had in the past at the Lansing Center, such as maybe the Margarita Fest or Grand Concert Series. So, you know, we're constantly looking at things to increase our revenue.
Well, and I appreciate your answer and I appreciate you coming. I am a little concerned though that the, it sounds like this is just a one-pronged attack to reduce that government subsidy. With the hotel tax, I would be expanding to look at how you're going to reduce these because it's getting harder and harder to justify this amount of money to the citizens of Lansing that we keep giving out in subsidy to LEPFA. So I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
Hey, do we have any additional questions, comments? Okay, I got, I have, I do have a couple real, real quick and they kind of go together. So, and I, and I may get this wrong, but the major league, they have standards you guys have to go by, I believe, and deadlines to meet. Where are you at in that process and are you meeting those deadlines currently?
So to answer your question, yes and no. The first dead, actually, the first two deadlines we did meet. The first was maybe two years ago when we had to renovate the home locker room and add locker room for females who are now most certainly in the sports industry. So that one we did meet. The second here was just recently where there was an extension of the batting tunnel and the re-renovation of the home locker room and a few other things. We did meet that deadline. The next hurdle is going to be redo the turf field over there at Jackson Field. That deadline is due by 2025 before the team takes the field. And normally the turf is actually replaced in the fall season, because that's a good time to more or less... because that's a good time to more or less replace the turf. And so we're hoping that will take place this fall and then that we will meet the requirements of the MLB by two thousand twenty-five and also the extension of the safety nets that have to go all the way down to the foul poles there at Jackson Field.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, with the decrease in subsidy from coming from the city of Lansing, how does that affect your day-to-day? For instance, like the meeting those deadlines, is it going to affect any of the personnel? Is there going to be layoffs?
At this moment, no, sir. We're, we're still running strong.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Spadafor.
Thank you very much. My question actually probably for our interim city attorney, Greg. Lansing Center, GrowSpec and the ballpark, are those considered parkland? Maybe tell you where I'm going. Okay. Would it require a vote of the citizens to sell those assets?
Let me look at that and get back to you.
Okay. I'm just curious, maybe it's several times this council's brought up the lack of interest in providing general fund dollars to run these city assets. So maybe we should take a look at encouraging the administration to sell them if we don't want to pay for them. That's the point. I'm wondering how, what that process would look like.
If I may through the chair, we do fund the golf course subsidy through the Parks Village. So that portion I can confirm is considered Parks property and it might have gone through a vote in previous, I think, when portions of GrowSpec.
Like way earlier golf course as well. Well, Greg, I'm, I'm satisfied with an answer later. We don't have to solve this tonight. Thanks.
Okay, we do have one from Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in the conversation too. Do you know what the, what's the debt service on the Lansing Center?
That I do not know, but I could find it's out.
We're not allowed to carry that.
We, so you're saying that we don't, we're not making payments on that?
That's paid through the general fund, debt service. Yep. And I can get you a schedule of it.
Please do. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council?
Greg, while you're looking into it, I would wonder what the implications of the TMO agreement would be on selling the ballpark as well? Thank you.
A correction. We have stadium debt service. We do not have Lansing Center debt service. And so that is covered under the stadium fund in the budget book.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see any additional questions or comments from council. Much appreciated for being here this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on down our presentation list, we have the LEDC. I believe Carl Dorsmer and Chris Klein are here. Whoever else is with the group, please come on down. Good evening, everyone. Are you guys seeing everybody else? I see that you turned your mic on. So Carl, Chris, I'm sorry, I do not know your name.
I'm Brandy Standler. I'm the operations manager.
Okay, Brandy, thanks for introducing yourself. Thanks for being here this evening. Feel free to go over the line of questioning with your presentation and we'll open up for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, I will answer the questions first, one at a time. So what, what's the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Basically, there's very little change. The operational expenses that we anticipate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five are pretty close to what they were in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. There's a little bit of inflation increases, but also we have reduced our office expenses because last year we moved into a new office. So they've offset each other. So roughly the operations budget is approximately the same. And then any changes in service that your department is responsible for and if so, why? No, the Lansing EDC continue to provide the city of Lansing with economic development services per the annual contract with the city. And the other, next question is, are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? The fees that we charge are not anticipated to change. However, periodically, we do take a review of, you know, what the internal cost is for, to provide various services that we provide. And so if necessary, we will raise our fees, you know, ask costs to increase. But not anticipated to do so, but reserve the right to be able to take a look at our fees and if they need to be adjusted, adjust them. And then next is, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in our budget? No, there are not. Are you eliminating, combining or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics? No, we're not doing any of that. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes, we are. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will provide with this budget? Yes, there are. We will continue to roll out our Lansing Equitable Economic Development Initiative. And the associated programs with that, that is ARPA-funded. We also are excited that we were awarded a strategic site readiness grant from MEDC to use on the former Fisher Body Verlinden GM site that's been abandoned for many years. So we will be focusing quite a bit of effort on that to get that ready for development and redeveloped. And then also, we plan to begin a more robust business retention program effort throughout the entire city to, to get out there and visit and engage businesses throughout the entire city and offer assistance to these businesses as they needed it. So and look for opportunities to be able to help them and almost looking for opportunities to help them expand and/or invest in the city. And next, I will turn it over to, for the following questions to Mr. Chris Klein.
All right. Good evening. So for the next question here, who are the top two largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? For fiscal year twenty-four, our largest vendors have been Operations School, which they are a, they have a contract with the lead power program. They provide technical assistance and help us operate that program. That was bid in two thousand twenty-three, but that's just a, a one-time contract for implementing that program. The next would be DBI and they provided office furnishings, furniture for our new office space. Also, we consider a one-time expenditure. They did help us with design work and help through that process. That was not done through a bidding process. And I know that's kind of a, a little misleading, both of those, just because of them being one-time expenses. So I do have kind of our more ordinary expenditures and they would see on an annual basis. So I can provide those as well. We have our, our rent expense. And then next up would be our, through our financial services, Clark Schaefer Hackett, provide accounting services, professional finance, financial services. We did review that during our transition in two thousand twenty-two and retain them for continuity. And then as well, we have Convergence Network. That's formerly ASK. They provide IT services and software purchases. And that was also carried through with the two thousand twenty-two transition. And then we have the next question being, what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? And what were the savings? The reorganization and transition of the Lansing EDC, it's allowed us to directly assess our organizational operations. And so some of these include a, a, excuse me, a rebranding effort in two thousand twenty-three that we undertook, as well as currently we're going through strategic planning processes to help us focus our organizational vision and our, our services that are provided to the community. We also continue building staff capacity, create more defined roles for staff in the various services that we offer. We also invest heavily in professional development. And that's extremely important to us. It increases both individual and organizational capabilities. Now, while these efforts don't directly have a defined amount of savings, they are challenging us to become more efficient and effective in the work that we do and an incredible value to the city. We also assess contractual services regularly. And we've reduced for when some of those services for activities that we can provide in-house or are deemed unnecessary. So some of this is include, would include technology services and some accounting processes that don't impact overall accounting operations. And that is the end of the questions provided.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Our internal auditor, Jim Delain.
Hey, Carl.
Hello.
In our packet, included under your domain is the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority and you should add the order, improvement of three. What role do you play there?
Want to take that or? So as part of our Economic Development Services contract with the city of Lansing, we do manage those boards. They're separate from the EDC, BRI and TIFA that we also manage. But there's actually four corridor improvement authorities. Three of them have development finance plans and three of them are now, they're TIF authorities, tax government financing. So three of them are now capturing. So I know you mentioned Saginaw and Michigan. There's also South MLK and North Grand River. But basically, we assist with getting those set up for their, their meetings. We work in conjunction with the city finance department on any reporting under PA fifty-seven. But they do operate mainly within their own, their, the board directs, you know, their expenditures and that.
Okay, because on, on the end of our packets, page one oh two and one oh three, Saginaw Street and Michigan Avenue, both of them show revenues coming in in the next fiscal year and no expenses. So nothing's going to be done?
So they are currently expending, they also receive some ARPA dollars and we are challenging them to continue rolling through that there. Each CIA received a hundred thousand dollars. I think they are pretty much through that expenditure. So there are planned expenses. They're just not defined enough to put within the budget as far as what those amounts are. So they are reviewing that and I guess will approve accordingly. But it, it does, through their development plan, they outline a variety of things. So for example, Michigan Avenue recently paid to have a website designed and to help highlight businesses during the construction. They're also helping with some facade improvements along the two thousand block. Saginaw Street, they are going to be going under bid in a matter of days or weeks for a marketing, a professional marketing firm to do something similar, to do marketing work. They are also committing an amount to a placemaking project along the corridor. So they are expending funds and they're rolling out projects such as that. Some of those right now are being expended through the ARPA dollars that were provided.
Okay, well, it would be nice if that a budget, maybe a guesstimate or something?
Yeah, we, we can provide, like, again, the, as staff, we, we manage those boards. We have asked for a spending plan of sorts, specifically for, for the ARPA dollars because those are required to, to get those in before the end of the fiscal year. And then also asking them to put together their next steps because they are capturing. We understand that and they are, are capturing at a greater rate than they maybe initially anticipated to, to have dollars available to implement some of those. We expected a little bit more time to build up capacity within that and plan out for those expenditures. But that kind of, the time has come right now to, to do that. So we are working with them to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So you said that the two thousand block of Michigan Avenue, that they were going to be putting in some facade improvements? I'm, I'm curious about that because I live right off the two thousand block and that's the nicest block on Michigan Avenue. Between the two thousand block and Sparrow, it looks like a bomb went off. Are they planning to do anything in the areas that really do have blight?
So there, there's a possibility that they could do additional facade programs there. We can definitely ask that of the board. That was their decision for the two thousand block to focus on that initially.
Do you know what they're focusing on in the two thousand block?
They're attempting to work with all of the, the building owners and businesses there to improve the entire block face essentially.
Are, are you talking on the side of where Gillespie built a new building or are you talking to the other side?
Other side.
Because I think some of those buildings have already been facade, have done new facades.
Okay. I'm, I'm not aware of that. It hasn't been through a, a program through the CIA or the city's facade improvement program. But if that's the case, they wouldn't be reimbursed for, you know, work that's already been done.
Okay. I would just make a suggestion that the, you know, Avenue Corridor, look at the areas that have true blight. Because it's rough looking in some of those spots on Michigan Avenue. Like the sign that has been spray painted out all the letters except for free. I have to look at every day. It, it looks bad. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Thanks for being here this evening.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving down. This one will be fast. This is City Council and Internal Auditor. So the city council's total expenditures decreased by seven point four percent, mostly due to a cut in miscellaneous operating. The miscellaneous, miscellaneous operating in the council budget was decreased by about fifty thousand dollars and that was the one-time money for water damage and repair that we just currently had. And there are no significant changes to our internal auditor budget as well. So as you know, we have our, our new interim internal auditor, Jim Delain here. He's going to work with us through budget. But after that, our, oh, I wrote it down right here. Our internal auditor posting should be going out tomorrow. And we are, should be status quo come the new fiscal year with a new internal auditor if everything goes right. We have our Committee on Personnel Chair here, Adam Hussein, Vice President Hussein. Do you have any additional comments? Okay, so that's about, do we have any questions from council? Comments? Okay, moving down. We have Discussion Action Item C, Resolution. There's eighteen reappointments here. So everybody has been vetted. They've been reached out. They have affirmed they agreed to continue serving. And with that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. I would, sorry, I would move the resolution for various reapportment, reappointments.
Okay, do we have any questions? We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just real quick, as this came to us from, from the mayor's office. If we look at Capitol Area Transportation Authority Board, I have some language in there that I've not seen before. It says Derek Milo as a city of Lansing member for a term to expire two thousand and twenty-seven on the date set by the provisions of the board articles of incorporation of bylaws. And then it has, it includes the same language for Mr. Nathan Triplet. And I'm not certain as to, if those dates are set by the board's articles of incorporation of bylaws, why are we not just saying the thing there? Why are we not just saying the date? And if it's Greg, it's Greg.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
This was raised to our attention by Ms. Boak because originally the resolution, I think, came up and maybe it said September and then it said June as the start and stop dates. And then we looked at the articles of incorporation and the bylaws for CADA and they do not have a date set in the Articles of Incorporation bylaw. It's, terms begin after their first general meeting of the year, which is, I think, the second half of September or something?
Annual meeting is September.
Yeah, annual meeting is in September. And then it's like a week or two after that annual meeting, whenever that is, that the terms begin and end. And rather than having us guess at it, because that term is, our resolution points, mayor appoints the person to the board. You approve that appointment. But they serve the duration, the start, the stop pursuant to the bylaws because they're an independent corporation. So that's the language that. So that's the language that we put in to sort of capture that. I'll just politely call it an oddity.
Okay. Any other additional questions, comments? Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, moving down. We have discussion item fiscal year 2024, budget policies. If you guys look in your packet, we have the draft adopted in 2023, 2024. As you can see, some of them are struck from it. So this is an annual exercise not to confuse the priorities we have in the fall. So if you do have any, if council has any budget policies they would like to add, please have them to sharey by this Thursday so that we can have a good discussion the following Monday and then move on the 20th to pass this budget. All right, moving down. Resolution E, appointment of Greg Venker. Okay, so as you know, we all, we approved his interim position. I'm sorry, the interim position was tabled. But since then, Greg has reached out to all council, discussed any concerns. From my understanding, he talked to everybody. And with that, Vice President Hussain.
So, so I need to move to untable first.
Yes.
So I'm going to move to untable the resolution of appointment for Mr. Gregory S. Baker, a city attorney.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Councilman Jackson.
It's not a concern about Greg. It's just.
This is a motion to remove from the table, so we just need to act on that motion first.
Sorry.
Then you can have your discussion. We just need to get it off the table. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
No.
Okay, Councilman Jackson.
Sorry, it's just not a concern about Greg. It's just a concern about the city attorney position in Lansing under the city charter and how, you know, the city attorney serves both council and the administration. And it just seems like sometimes there's different interests, and it's just, I feel like it's hard for a city attorney to have to be respectful and respond to both sometimes maybe competing interests and not have the other party, especially council and myself. I can only speak for myself, kind of questioning some of the city attorney's decisions, whoever that city attorney is, and wonder if there's underlying like pro-administration or if there's, you know, what side he has to take, if there is a better side or a different side. But I did, Greg reached out, and I appreciate that. We talked about that, and he was able to answer my question. But I just want to put it out there because, you know, the charter's up and everything too, so it's just a concern I've had in the past. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jackson. So with that, Vice President Hussain.
Sure, I would, at this point, actually move the resolution of appointment for Mr. Gregory S. Baker as the city attorney.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Councilman Brown.
I don't have any concerns, but just looking at the resolution, talking about 16 hours of supervision management, can somebody explain that just for the general public?
Would that go to the administration?
Yes, looking at, yes, looking at the resolution is talking about 16 hours of collegiate level supervision management needing to be waived. So for the general public, could you explain what that is and why it's being waived?
I cannot. I think our interim city attorney can, though.
In fact, I can. If you look at, in the ordinances that set job requirements for nearly all of the department heads, there's language in there like that. You'll see that it references 16-quarter hours of credit, which is an old system that I think Michigan State used and doesn't use any longer. Ideally, I mean, it's supposed to imply that somebody took a series of business courses, specifically on management, from a college or university. And I will just say that having watched appointments of other people, that that is not always, but often waived because I will, and I will tell you this to myself very frankly, when I was in undergrad, I did not think that I would be, I did not go to business school, and I did not take credits in a business minor. I did not think that I would be here needing, that's essentially a fairly substantial number of credits, classes taken in specifically business management. So I don't have that. Many people don't, that I have seen at least. And so there's a provision that the council can waive that requirement, and that's what's being asked in the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions, comments from council? All right, seeing none. We do have a motion. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Greg. All right, so now we are to closed session, moving into closed session. Vice President Hussain.
Sure. Pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsections LH of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that to recess in a closed session to consult with the city attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by statute, specifically to discuss written material from the city attorney provided under attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product, which is also exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act pursuant to MCL 15.243 subsections LG.
All right, thank you, Vice President Hussain. Ms. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spadeford. Councilmember Hussain.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Pally Van Ooglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, folks, we'll be back shortly to reconvene and then to adjourn. Okay, no other business before the body. We are adjourned. See you at 7:00.